Please rise, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and start our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Union Township Board of Trustees for September 10th, 2020. Let the record show that all three trustees are present, and our fiscal officer, Mr. Ron Campbell, also present. Folks, first of all, we appreciate so many people coming out, and we're glad you're here. However, the reason the room's set up the way it is is to try to have as much social distancing as possible, and if you could wear a mask, it'd appreciate it. And if there's anybody, it has to wait outside. If you maybe speak later and could exit so that someone else could come in and do what they need to do, that would be appreciated. So just want to ask everybody's cooperation, try to help us out as much as possible so we can all stay safe and have a good meeting. So thank you very much for that. So gentlemen, our first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. This would be from the August 13th regular meeting. You've had a chance to look those over. Is there, if there's no question, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Second, roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is our minutes from the August 13th zoning meeting. If there's no questions or changes, I'll ask for a motion to approve this.
Second, roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is correspondence. Mr. Campbell, did you have anything to report this week?
No, sir, I have none. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. So next we'll move on to our department reports. We appreciate all our department heads being here for, to give their reports each meeting, and we do appreciate their participation. So we'll start off with our fire and emergency medical service chief, Stan Diling.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of August, the department made 184 fire responses, 403 emergency medical responses, completed 1,089 hours of training, did 30 public education details, and completed 50 fire safety inspections. And I'd just like to take a minute and say that tomorrow is the anniversary of the terrorist attacks of 9/11. On that day in 2001, some 412 emergency workers, of which 343 were firefighters, died. In the last year, another 27 FDNY and 169 total first responders have died from 9/11-related illnesses, many at which were a result of respiratory and lung injuries suffered. On the day of the event are working on the site for many days after. And more recently, the COVID-19 pandemic has complicated many of these illnesses, causing even more deaths. So tonight, I would like to just take a moment and remember and recognize all the dedication, service, and sacrifice by those people, and to honor our commitment to never forget. And that completes my report.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate you bringing that up, and thank you so much for remembering those people. Certainly a day our country will never forget.
Amen.
Absolutely. Thank you, chief. You know, kind of just on the back of that, I'd see, I think, right now, too, 19 years earlier, you know, some 3,000-plus families sitting down together for the last time, not knowing that, and what America's gone through since that point to where we are today. So, God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next report tonight is from our police department chief, Scott Gaviglia, reporting.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Some numbers from August 2020. Communication center handled 3,600 calls for service or police fire and EMS. Patrol division took 305 incident reports, investigated 100 crashes, performed 321 traffic stops, issued 126 citations and 213 warnings, conducted 487 field interviews, made 135 criminal arrests, 80 traffic arrests, and we served 169 warrants. Investigations division to date, they've closed 202 cases. Fuel cost for the month was $6,500 with about 32,000 miles driven. And I'd like to add that this Saturday, the 12th, at the Furniture Fair in East Gate, it's a Crime Stoppers, a major fundraiser. It's a shredding event, along with a drug takeback. So if there's anything you need to shred, just take it up there, they'll do it for you for donation. If there's any drugs you want to drop off, just take it up between 8:00 and 12:00 on Saturday. Crime Stoppers works with Union Township frequently. You see more of the press coming out of Cincinnati, but we've solved a number of cases through Crime Stoppers, and Crime Stoppers gets that money through your donations, and I think the program does work. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, chief. I've had a lot of people asking about shredding event, and so I'm glad that's coming up, and we'll certainly post it everywhere so everybody knows.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions that are coming?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Just 3,625 calls for service for police fire and EMS in the month of August. Great work.
Thanks, sir.
Next report tonight is from our service department, Mr. Matt Taylor, director.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. In the cemetery division, from August 15th through the 31st, six burials were performed, generating $3,100. Fifteen resident graves were purchased, generating $8,250. One columbarium niche was purchased, generating $1,750. Two cremation scattering gardens were purchased, generating $1,000. The total amount generated for the period was $15,591.80. In the roads division, a total of 28 workhorses were completed on 21 township roads, and staff formed and poured two catch basin, ditched 1,086 feet of road frontage, installed 60 feet of pipe on a total of seven streets. In the roads division, renovations were performed on the baseball fields of Veterans Park, and staff sealed all the wood benches at Klepper Park. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I spent a lot of time at Veterans Park on Sunday in Place Oxford.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. And also, a lot of the paving project, a lot of the base repairs I saw were done with the concrete work and things like that, so it looks like that's moving right along, too. Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
Thank you. Seeing they did Glen Rose Lane up there, it looks real well.
Good.
Very, very well done. Looks great, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Our next report tonight is from our planning and zoning department, Mr. Corey Wright, director.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of August, we fielded 62 inspections, handled 10 complaints on properties, issued five warning citations, three 15-day noncompliance letters, and three 30-day violation letters. Additionally, we resolved 12 violations administratively and processed one nuisance property for the month of August. With regard to permit activity, we issued two commercial permits for the month of August, two commercial occupancy changes, 15 signed permits, two single-family permits, one multifamily permit for 52 units. And the remaining projects were homeowner projects. 54 permits for the month of August. Monthly revenue total is $8,007. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Appreciate it.
And our next report is from our administration, Mr. Ken Geis, Township administrator.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. You'll see on the agenda tonight that there's a River Valley TIF. That's a project that we should be able to announce the completion of all the negotiation of that project, but this is in anticipation of that. This is a project that is somewhat unique to Union Township, and it's, we don't get a lot of these very often anymore because it involves an industrial project on Round Bottom. We're going to have to create this TIF because on this project, we need to extend a sanitary line on that, and it's, I think it's more than, going to be more than 1,000 feet on that. There's a gas extension associated with it, and then some road improvements on Round Bottom Road in the Barksaw Run Road area. We believe that the initial part of this project will be more than a $15 million investment, 200 new jobs, newer relocated jobs to Union Township in that. The thing that's most exciting about this project is that this is only going to take about 13 acres of a total 50-acre site, and with this project, we will have the residual 30-some acres available for development, for industrial development on land that was generally unusable for anything other than really an agricultural use because of the onsite systems that were required on it. So we will, this will be a fully operational industrial development down there, and it really will be a great addition to Union Township in Claremont County. So again, I would encourage the board to favorably consider the TIF resolution that's on the agenda. The sale of the 4,000 McMahon project is progressing. We hope to close this, this month on that. There was a phase-two evaluation that was complete on that. That came back clean. Everything is moving forward. There's no issues that we know of at that point, and we anticipate that that will finally close this month. On our note issue, everything went well. Again, we were able to reissue that note, and it was around 23 basis points on that note issue, which is incredible. Just two years ago, we were at about 125 basis points, almost 100 basis points more than that. One of the positive things on that is we were able to cooperate with the treasurer's office of the state of Ohio on that. We were able to use their MIG rating on that and lower the bond, the bond rating, which actually gives us a better, a better sellability of that. So again, it was a, I think, a AA3 on that bond rating, and so that went very well. The treasurer's office even put out a press release on that, the cooperation that they received from Union Township and the sale of that because, again, it was sold at such a low market rate in that, that it was very good even statewide. On the website, you'll see that we've updated the information with the new Eastern Corridor stuff that will really give all the residents and people in the, in the region kind of a highlight of exactly what's, what's occurring, what's been funded on the Phase Four of the Eastern Corridor project. The next phases on that to be completed after the finalization of the Glen Estie-Klepper Road area is to begin work on Elik and Bach-Buxton at State Route 32 in anticipation of the overpass on that. That will line up with all of the work that has been completed on Old State Route 74 to the western boundaries, just west of Glen Estie-Withamsville on that. And again, that's a, you know, a multimillion-dollar project that really we, Union Township's been involved with since 1994 on that. You'll see on the Eastern Corridor, on the website, that even the Glen Estie portion of the project has been funded and allocated for that. And what will occur at Glen Estie-Withamsville, that won't be a true full interchange like at Bach-Buxton, but there will be an overpass on Glen Estie so that when you get off of 275 and you head east, where now you, the first traffic signal you encounter is Glen Estie, the next traffic signal would be at Elik, then the third traffic signal would be at Old State Route 74. All of those will be eliminated, and so it will be free-flowing from 275 all the way to Claremont Hospital. In that, there will be no traffic signals in that, and that's all part of a long-range project that really we started in 1994 on that in anticipation of the 80,000 trip travels a day on the Appalachian Highway from 275 east in that. So it took an awful long time because it was from 1994 to 2012 before we turned the first spoonful of dirt on the project. But really, since then, there's been continuous work on the Eastern Corridor project east of that. And one of the good things for Union Township in Claremont County in that is that the Eastern Corridor project extended west into Hamilton County, and there were some communities in Hamilton County that resisted the modifications and the recommended changes for that, and when they did that, there was money allocated for that. So we were able to capture their money that they were going to use because the improvements weren't going to occur there and use it in Claremont County for that. So we really have benefited dramatically from our participation with Federal Highway on it, ODOT, the state of Ohio, the Claremont County Engineers Office, and the TID on that OKI as well. And it really has been a great partnership, and the, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of improvement along the baseline 275 as well as 32 have dramatically assisted in moving the trip travels through Union Township. Earlier in the month, I accepted an award for, on behalf of the board trustees, from the VVA 649 is, they recognized the board as the business of the month. So again, a nice honor for the board. One thing for the people that are voting in Union Township this year, make sure you take a look at where your precincts are and your polling places are. For example, in Union Township, we've historically had two polling, two precincts in the civic center, and this year in November, we're going to have seven. So a lot of the polling places that, the precincts that had previously been other places are going to be here, and there have been some other changes in that. So make sure that if you're, if you're going to vote on Election Day, that you take a look at that and really have an idea of where you're going to be. We're going to make sure that we have signage here, so, because we're going to have some of the polling places on the lower level in the Queen City Rooms A and B here, and then some of the precincts will actually vote on the senior services side of the building. But we'll have signage there available, and of course, our staff will be here to help in directing people that, you know, because it's going to be different this year. And the last thing I wanted to talk about tonight is there's a resolution for consideration of the board to begin a process for a design-build COVID-19 distribution and immunization center, along with a firehouse. We have the unique opportunity to capture up to $1.7 million of COVID-19 reimbursement money this year. That's associated with substitute Senate Bill 357 right now, in that the Ohio Senate passed that unanimously last week, and the intent is, I believe, for the House to consider that sometime in two weeks from now. And if they do that, hopefully, the governor would sign that right away. That would enable the state of Ohio to receive $650 million of revenue to reimburse the township for COVID-19-related incidents. We've talked about a, an additional firehouse in the north region of Union Township, and just the timing of this, it could come at a better time, but we really don't have a choice if, if we're going to potentially use this. We can, we can partner and create an immunization center and a COVID-19 distribution center with the firehouse and receive $1.7 million, which is really about half of the capital cost for that project. Again, it's not something we budgeted. It's not really something that we planned to do in 2020. You know, we certainly have levies going on right now. We really weren't considering that. But this is a unique opportunity that I think, you know, the board should at least consider in that if, if we move on this now, assuming that the substitute Senate Bill 357 passes, in that we can have the opportunity or at least the discretion to move forward with that project. And you can tie that to the success or, you know, or not of the levy as well in November. But regardless of that, there's always been the thought that, you know, and the chief's been talking about this, the fire chief's been talking about this for more than 15 years, about having a fire station located in the northern portion of the township. We've acquired a parcel that would meet the requirements of that, and with this opportunity, we could fund, you know, nearly half of that capital expenditure while also allowing for us to, you know, assist in the COVID-19 distribution of that. We can also provide a, you know, potentially a drive-through testing and immunization center in the firehouse. We worked, you know, kind of quickly with the fire chief to design that, and we can do this in a design-build fashion if we move quickly on that. If this doesn't occur, we really don't have a mechanism or we don't have an expenditure for the $1.7 million that is allocated for Union Township, so we would just return that. So that would just go back to the state of Ohio, and then some other community would be the benefactor of that for something, or potentially go back to the US government as it relates to that. So again, I don't think that we should try to manufacture something by, you know, buying something ridiculous like hundreds of thousands of masks or hundreds of thousands of PPE or something that we would just stockpile to use that money as opposed to losing it. But this is, this is an immediate need that we have. It's an immediate benefit for the people in Union Township in the region, and I just wanted to bring it before the board for consideration tonight. And that concludes my report.
Lot of information. Thank you, Mr. Geis.
So, Mr. Geis, is that for future consideration, or are you looking for action on this tonight? What would you like?
We, there's a resolution tonight. We're on a very tight timeframe. We actually have to encumber, if the board is going to move forward with this, we would have to encumber the funds no later than the second week in November. We actually would have to spend that by the end of the year. And to do that on a project like this, the only way that we could do that is we would have to enter into a design-build process, which we would probably do anyway for this firehouse, and then encumber the money and get a contractor on board that would be able to order the materials, begin construction almost immediately on that so that we could make the expenditure by the end of the year. The final reconciliation on the expenditures has to occur by February of 2021.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Geis, with that, so truly the tight timeline, tight schedule for that right now that it is, though, the opportunity costs to, if it were to forego that decision on action tonight, would leave the township with the inability to even try to pursue the additional funding that's being released from Senate Bill 357. And again, that is coronavirus relief funding that's being made available by the state. So from an aspect of being able to have opportunities on the table to pursue a direction, I think that would be the kind of the course of action at hand is to either be able to consider that as a direction, or by not taking action, you're basically cutting off that opportunity lost, opportunity cost is eliminated, and, you know, not being able to be able to deliver, you know, that added capability to the township or be able to provide, receive that funding from Senate Bill 357. And, you know, really, as we look at this and we look at moving forward into next year, we don't, we don't truly recognize or know, you know, we don't, we don't truly recognize or know, you know, Operation Warp Speed is, is looking to have vaccines ready, you know, by the end of the year is the commitment right now. But, you know, what that looks like. So, and one thing I think that has become more certain is that it's, this is not a one-time kind of only event. So anyway, just kind of that further planning for 2021, we are, you know, potentially, I guess, projecting and looking forward into that, that ability to add that safety services to the township, let alone from being able to have essentially force multiplier with it being a firehouse in a needed area to provide response and response time. So just, I want to be clear and for the people to be clear that there's, be kind of the course of action, but, you know, even to move forward or something tonight, it's really an event that is, you're either deciding to forego an opportunity or an opportunity, a direction to move forward on that you can allow the opportunity to still be on the table, but the township's not fully committed at this point.
Right, exactly. Very well put. That this, by the action of the board tonight, that, that will enable us to move this forward. It doesn't obligate the board to do anything in that other than it allows us to begin, begin the process for consideration. There, the timeline that we have on this final adoption of anything to, to move this forward with at the earliest be in the first week in November and probably the second week in November, certainly would be after the election on that. So there would be some certainty associated with it. But if we don't move tonight, if we don't act on this tonight, there is no, there's no way that we could do anything. So you're exactly correct. We would lose the opportunity to even pursue this.
So in my perspective, then, I just, I view that as the ability to give the township the capability to continue with due diligence and essentially, you know, it's like a research or study as to having the opportunity to still be on the table and to not forego that. So, okay, thank you. That helps clarify for me. Thank you.
Anything else?
I have nothing else. Thank you. Well spoken.
And, Mr. Geis, you did speak a lot about the Route 32 improvements. So I just want to remind people that you can go to the Union Township website. And at the top, there's some headlines. If you just scroll through those, one of them's about that project. And if you click on that, it opens up the page with charts. It's also listed, if you're on Facebook, you know, like the Union Township page, but you can look there. It's been posted on there too, if you wanted to take a look at it and glance at what the project looks like. But there's a lot of good information on that page explaining, there's a map of the project and all the different pieces of it coming together. So I appreciate you bringing that up and putting it on the website so quickly. Okay. There's nothing else, we'll move on. There's no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to old business. Gentlemen, any old business?
I have none, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
We'll move on to new business then. First item is approval of payments. This is basically to pay our bills. Mr. Campbell has processed these. Gentlemen, there's no questions. I'll ask for a motion to pay our bills.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next item is approval of our monthly financial report. This is also prepared by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal. Gentlemen, if you have any questions?
No questions, sir.
All right. I'll ask for a motion then to approve the monthly financial report.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Awesome. Thank you. The next item is purchase orders. We're being asked to approve purchase orders. These are purchase orders that exceed $10,000 and they're recommended by Mr. Ken Geis, our township administrator. Mr. Geis, could you please read through these first?
Yeah, so the majority of these tonight are TIF reimbursement payments for contracts with the school districts and other developer agreements that we have. So the first requisition tonight is to Vogapool Fire Equipment, and that's for some additional PPE and mask and filters at $18,000. The next is to the Milford Board of Education. That's a TIF settlement, $846,584.06. The next is to the West Clermont Local School District at $905,910.97. Following that is Great Oaks Joint Vocational, $18,725.01. Redwood Living Incorporated, that is a second half TIF settlement, $46,106. Clover Communities Union LLC, $21,782.96. McCob Partners of Kentucky LLC, again, another reimbursement. That's for the Trilogy Project, $17,370.53. The Villas at Waterford Glen LLC, $27,197.32. Echelon 360 LLC, $43,768.32. The next is for the Fire Department, Stryker Sales Corporation. It's for a two-power load system, and that's for the EMS units, $46,974.06. Decan International, it's our annual maintenance agreement for software, $17,790. And the last is for the Police Department for the estimated fuel usage for two months at Fleet Corps Technologies at $20,000.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
No, I have none, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Then I'll ask for a motion to approve the purchase orders.
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item, gentlemen, is a personnel action. This is for our Police Department. We're being asked to hire Ashley Dunn for the position of communications specialist, which is a 911 dispatcher. This will be effective September 22, 2020, at the rate of pay consistent with the current collective bargaining union agreement between the Union Township Board of Trustees and the Union Township Police Association, and contingent upon its successful completion of a physical examination. Chief DeViglio, was there any opening comments that you wanted to make about this?
Yes, thank you, sir. Mr. McGraw, Mr. McGee, Mr. Logue, tonight for your consideration, representing Ashley Dunn for the position of communications specialist for Union Township Police Department. Ms. Dunn's completed all steps of the background process to include polygraph. Ms. Dunn has previous experience as a communications operator, and she currently serves as Brown County Sheriff's Deputy. I heard her start date would be 9/22/20, rate of pay would be consistent, that's set forth in the current CBA. Her final hiring is contingent upon passing of the physical. Includes my remarks, sir.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any questions for the chief?
No, I do not. I mean, we are in need of, have been in need quite some time for another communications person now. Thank you very much, Chief, for putting this young lady up.
Yeah, a lot of residents are fully aware we have a police department that are always, not always aware that we have a communications department too that does all the 911 communications for fire and police and often helps out on the county level too when danger arises. So it's a great department and fascinating what they do. So if there's no other questions, I'll ask for a motion to hire Ashley Dunn for this position.
Make that, make that motion to hire Ashley Dunn and contingent upon a successful completion of a physical examination.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you and congratulate you and welcome to the team. And you're joining a very good team of people. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. And, what, last year, more than 51,000 calls received, so.
You're going to be busy.
We are, we're happy to have you. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Officer Graham.
Some people may want to come in since they cleared a little bit of space. We'll give them a minute to come in.
Another seat up, two more seats if anybody wants to. Two more seats. Two more.
Thank you for your patience. We're, as we mentioned before, we're doing our best to socially distance and create some space for everybody. So we appreciate you being patient and we're glad you could join us now.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on then to the item E, which is the McMahon Spur Parking Lot Improvement Project. We're being asked to authorize the advertisement receipt of bids relative to this McMahon Spur Parking Lot Improvement Project. Is there any questions or comments?
No, I have none. It's time to get it done and move forward.
I'll ask for a motion then to authorize the advertisement receipt of bids relative to this project.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great. Okay, we have a number of resolutions to consider tonight. The first is we're being asked to adopt Resolution 2020-25. This is a River Valley Industrial TIF District. We're being asked to create a tax increment financing district for the River Valley Industrial TIF. Mr. Geis mentioned this before. Any comments or questions?
Glad to have him come aboard and get it moving forward.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make a comment on, you know, that, like, Mr. Geis, you know, spoke to earlier, you know, this area's location along Grand Bottom Road, currently industrial zone. You know, it's an area that does not have sewer, it does not have gas, you know, so to be able to have anything actually supported or developed there, you know, that, that is, you know, one thing as far as a kind of litmus test that it is needed, you know, Hamilton Safe and from that company's perspective to be able to invest here in Union Township, but I believe also, you know, the coordination work that is able to take place with Clermont County overall, you know, is a good demonstration of working with our other local governments together to help at a time when, across the board, we've seen investment dollars held up and spending revenue dollars to local governments due to tax revenue decrease in COVID, you know. But from that aspect of, you know, business being able to, one, take on the financing, find the financing, or be able to, you know, make this project occur, you know, I believe without the, an absence of, of being able to work this effort to be able to provide the TIF to help, it's something that truly, the project would not be able to occur. So that's the right type of investment and on the, you know, from what's needed with the sewer and the gas, you know. Another consideration, keep in mind with that, that location, that proximity, I drive by there very frequently going to St. Anne Nature Center. I know from talking with the executive director out of the St. Anne Nature Center, this is something that is downstream from them. And that's what's fantastic about that is that it's a, you know, not an impact, not a consideration for an impact being downstream. So there's nothing to question or displace there. And again, it's really a large swath of property that is, you know, vacant as it is, but, you know, MeLink is right there, you know, and so it does fit to what, to what is in that northern portion of the township. So just kind of the thought process consideration that I've ran through with looking at this project. And again, you know, something that, Mr. Geis, I don't know if you can speak to anything on, on the, you know, being able to coordinate with the county level on this too, but the benefit that that has when, when everyone's government can be, you know, on the same page and moving forward, doing what's right for, for the community and the citizens.
Well, thank you. We are working with the, actually, the Clermont County Commissioners on, on this project, and we're talking about entering into an intergovernmental agreement where they will potentially be the depository and the bank for, for this. And we will use the debt retirement that is created through this TIF District to make the payments, to reimburse them for the upfront money. And the advantage to that in, in this particular project is time in that the company wants to move immediately. Mr. Wright and I, we were on a conference call yesterday about this project and, you know, we've been working on this for about six months now. And, you know, we've been kind of plodding along, so, well, yesterday they told us that they're waiting on us now. So the fact that the county is going to, to fund this project really, one, helps us, otherwise, we would probably have to fund that using our resources on it just because of the timing of that. And then the county is going to participate and use the Port Authority, I think, for a sales tax exemption on the hard goods of the project with that. So again, this is a little unique that we're working this well with Clermont County. It's a, it's a great step in the right direction in that Jobs Ohio is involved in, in this project and it really has come together and, you know, hopefully, this is an indication of a lot better things to come in the future.
Fantastic.
I would also mention it's a, it's a rail, a railroad corridor, and they've been very cooperative too, from my understanding.
Right, correct.
So that's an underutilized rail system there that they're looking for the future benefit of this too.
Thank you for the update on that, to share that as, again, as well. So, you know, a win-win-win, you know, potentially all the way around. So, thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
Oh, I have none. That's it.
I'll ask for a motion then to adopt Resolution 2020-25.
So moved, sir.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have a couple of things coming for, Mr. Campbell. The first resolution is 2020-26. This is our amended 2020 Permanent Appropriations Resolution. Mr. Campbell, do you have any comments about this?
So really, the only thing that I really want to bring out is a notice that we added a FON 12. That's for the COVID-19 money. That was a mandate we had to do. The rest of it is just normal, day-to-day business, right? The receipts come in, we either hit it on, we're a little bit less or maybe a little bit heavy, and we're just doing our adjustments while we're doing it. But primarily, it's just FON 12.
All right. Got you. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions or comments?
No, I just thank you, Mr. Campbell, for you and your large staff you have, you and Ms. White, taking care of this appropriations and you do a great job each and every year. And we thank you so much for your due diligence, taking care of this workforce. God bless you, man.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Tim.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion then to adopt Resolution 2020-26. This is the amended 2020 Permanent Appropriations Resolution.
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is Resolution 2020-27. This resolution is for accepting the budget commission amounts and rates. Mr. Campbell, do you have anything to say about this?
This is just our statutory adoption. Once they vote, then we have to have a resolution saying that we're accepting the rates that they set us.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Just more paperwork.
All right. I'll ask for a motion to adopt this resolution, 2020-27, the Budget Commission amounts and rates.
So moved, sir.
Second. Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have Resolution 2020-28. This resolution's regarding the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, also known as CARES Act. Gentlemen, this resolution, Mr. Geis talked quite a bit about, will enable us to move forward with the CARES Act funding if we feel that is appropriate, once we, but we need to pass this resolution in order to. to be eligible for it. Is there any further questions or comments?
Well, I think it's been well spoken of this evening, and I think Mr. Geis and Mr. Logue spoke both about it, and I think it's something that needs to be done. It needs to be done quickly.
All right, we've, we've been planning for additional facility, and this would be a great way to make that more of a reality than just a plan. If there's no further comments, I'll ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-28.
I'll, I'll just, I'll say real briefly on that though, and frankly, it, you know, again, the funding that's being made available through the Senate bill on that, that's, you know, from the pot of money that can be made available, that's at least looking at, you know, a cost share. So as, as we already have fire, lease, operating offset budgets, and what their levies bring in, that's, you know, that's not something from the taxpayers, that's something from, from the state level, so specifically for Union Township, you know, that's, I think that's a creative, innovative approach to being able to continue to push a, a cost share and look at the fund, the funding that's being expended and ensuring that we're being effective with the taxpayers' dollars. So, so again, that's just strike, very striking to me on, on this avenue, just to be able to have a potential opportunity on the table. So with that, I'll make the motion to, to adopt Resolution 2020-28 regarding Coronavirus Aid, Relief, Economic Security Act.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very well. Because we have no idea the, how long this situation's going to go on. What, what's coming around the bend, we don't know yet, and we need to be in a position to be able to act and help our residents.
Absolutely. And I don't mean to just run right into making the motion there to, to not provide some additional comment, or feedback from, from both you, trusty McGee, trusty McGraw, so you guys know how I get charged up sometimes, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Like action? All right, so we'll move on to our next resolution we're being asked to adopt. This is a nuisance abatement resolution, and most of the time, just for people who aren't familiar with this process, it comes to, this time here, there's a lot of weeds and activity where people aren't taking care of properties, so sometimes it's because there's garbage and junk and stuff like that left on our property. Often though, in the summertime, we get a lot of properties where it's neglected and overgrown, and nobody's taking care of it. So you wouldn't want that in your neighborhood, and so now our zoning department goes out and makes inspections. They try to work with the property owners, try to get them to cooperate and take care of it without any action from the board. But as a final resting spot, the properties that don't cooperate, that don't take care of the properties, then it comes before the board where we have to take action and, and move on it. So tonight, we have a number of properties that are a part of this resolution. The first would be 4817 Powderhorn Drive, Cincinnati. 455 Glen Rose Lane, also Cincinnati. 3882 Bennett Road, Cincinnati, Ohio. 4280 Amaret Drive, Cincinnati. 830 State Route 125, Cincinnati. Then two parcels, one is, doesn't have an exact address, but it's right next to 830, I'm, I'm sorry, right by 834, I believe, State Route 125. So there's, basically it's a gas station there that has been neglected.
Right.
I think I got that right. So those are the properties listed. Gentlemen, do you have any comments or further questions about this?
I'd just say the same thing I say every month. We have these come up. I just can't believe people would spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars for a piece of property and won't take care of it. Just, that's second to me to think that somebody would not take care of their property.
It's unusual for the property on Ohio Pike because it's
Yes, it is.
otherwise a pretty good project.
Some of these pictures are really terrible.
And again, you know, with, with those and with the zoning inspections that occur and, you know, the coordination that we're able to have also with the police, fire, safety services too, we're able to help facilitate if there's a welfare check that's needed, you know, or what may be going on on these properties as well. So, I mean, it's always a, you know, fantastic coordination of services of the townships they will provide, but, you know, once it's been determined that's not, you know, the scenario and that's the case, seeing these and, you know, I'm looking at a, at a photo here that has, I haven't seen this before really, maybe you have, but grass is growing pretty tall out of a gutter. And I haven't seen trees, you know, sprout up and grow, but not so much grass and not to just call out a specific detail, but that's just, that's interesting. So, so, you know, definitely something that's in need. Again, it could be a neighbor's house or something that's, again, have, have the welfare check and have, have that ability, you know, completed and rolled out, but help get cleaned up, so absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll ask for a motion then to adopt Resolution 2020-29. It's a nuisance abatement for, this would be authorizing the abatement removal of vegetation, noxious weeds, garbage, trash, and debris. This is pursuant to Section 505-87 of the Ohio Revised Code. Is there a motion?
So moved, sir.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So gentlemen, I'll take care of our regular business, but this time I'll open the floor for comments from our board members. Gentlemen, anything you would like to mention tonight?
Yes, I would like to say, election is right around the corner, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who do not know, we have an election this year. But the last day to register is October the 5th. You can do that at the Board of Elections, and I believe at any library facility that may be open. We, do we do that here anymore in the township? We used to years ago. But please register to vote. It's one of those last freedoms that we have, are going, slowly going away. And ladies and gentlemen, please get out and vote. Appreciate it very much, and I know those that are running for offices, state, federal, excuse me, federal, and some of the issues that are before us, please get out and vote, make yourself known. Thank you. God bless you, everyone. Thank you.
So Mr. McGee, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll add a little bit to that. You say register to vote. Some people might think, well, I'm registered to vote. Make sure you're registered at the right address. So if you've moved or changed addresses, make sure you got an up-to-date registration. And like Mr. Geis said, a lot of voting places may have moved or changed, your normal voting place may not be the same. I highly encourage the early voting. It goes on through the month of October. I think at first it's just during the week, and then eventually they have weekend hours, so you can get your voting done ahead of time instead of waiting until Election Day. You can also do absentee ballot. If you request an absentee ballot, I would do it now. Get your request in now so you can get it sent to you right away. I don't suggest, once you fill out, you've got time, I highly suggest take it down to the Board of Elections. They have a drop box where, once you fill out your ballot, you can put it in the drop box. And you do not have to wait for the mail to get it there. It's real easy to do. You just pull in, there's a, it looks like a little mailbox. It's white, it's right out in front of the Board of Elections. You just put your, your ballot is, will be in a sealed envelope once you fill it out, and you put it right in that box. You can also put your request for the absentee ballot in that box. So if you don't want to mail it to the Board of Elections, and you've got time to drive down to the TAVIA, you can drop off your request for an absentee ballot in the drop box also, and they'll mail you out a ballot. Or, like I said, you can vote early, which I recommend, so you don't, then you're not experiencing long lines and things like that. So it'll be an interesting election. You know, there's going to be a lot of twists and turns. So I, if you want to make sure your votes counted, vote early and get it done. And so I just, I appreciate you bringing that up tonight because that's a great point to make, and I'll make sure everybody knows what's going on with that, so.
Absolutely, and so you really nailed, nailed the most specific ways for how you need to go out there and vote, vote early, ensure you're, you know, either in-person early voting or absentee ballot being delivered. You know, when it goes through the mail, you lose physical control of it, and there's, there's far too much of uncertainty right now with, with part of that for the mail. So, and, and not, not, you know, from pure accident or mistake, but, you know, sometimes with, with additional work being, being done, unfortunately, that erodes, you know, our freedoms and, and our right, and our, our right for, you know, to vote. So I've personally been in countries where, you know, where, where that's oppressed and people don't have that freedom, and it's something that, you know, we not take for granted here. We need a, you know, we're Americans, and we can do better than that. We will. And, you know, it's our, our duty this, this election cycle. So let's keep working at it and make sure everyone in your neighborhood and communities get out and vote. And thank you for sharing that detailed information on it. Absolutely.
Absolutely. We do that as a public service, because I've gotten complaints about the voting process, but the trustees have nothing to do with the voting process. That's the Board of Elections and the Secretary of State, so we're just here to help and try to get information. So, but thank you for bringing that up. It's very timely.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Logue, you have anything you want to talk about tonight?
Um, you know, not, not, not specifically on that, just you talk about the importance of this election as it comes up. Been outside the township, you know, and have, have seen some of the stuff going on in larger cities. You know, one, it just makes you grateful that the township and the community that we all live in here in Union Township has not had that type of division and impact brought to its doorstep. So it just really makes you appreciate home and, and the freedoms that are, you know, protected here of our, you know, fine police, fire, safety services, and, and, you know, what is provided here because there's definitely, you know, fleeting of, of population from different cities at this point in time. And, I mean, I think if you watch the housing market here locally, it's, houses are going pending and, and hours and for, for over their sale price. So it's just, it's an interesting time as, as it is. So just kind of from a 30,000-foot level, just, just know how, how much we strongly appreciate Union Township and, and our, our slice of heaven here. So thank you, and your, for all communities. So thank you. Very fortunate.
Okay. Couple of things I wanted to mention real quick. Thank you, Chief Dymeling, and once again for mentioning 9/11 and the, all the things that'll go on, and hopefully people still remember, and we'll take some time tomorrow to reflect on it. There's always a lot of TV shows, especially for younger people who didn't live through that. It's hard to believe that we've come that far already, that there's kids born that don't even know about it. And so it's great to remember and to talk about it. So thank you, Chief, for bringing that up again. The long-awaited Casey's General Store is well underway now.
Moving, moving.
They're moving very quickly. That's over in the Mount Carmel area. It's a big investment for the Mount Carmel area, and we've been looking to, over the years, to try to build up Mount Carmel and, and bring some new developments there to boost some of the property values and things going on there. So that's, project is one of the first here in the Cincinnati area. They're one of the, it's, they're a, basically a general store. They sell gasoline, but they're also, for people who don't know, one of the largest pizza delivery places in the country. So usually, you think of pizza, you think of maybe Papa John's or Domino's or locally La Rosa's, but Casey's General Store sells a lot of pizza and they deliver. So they also make fresh doughnuts, so they're kind of unique to that. So if you've been out west, like in Iowa or Nebraska and South Dakota, that's where their, a lot of their stores are. But this is coming to one of the first in the Cincinnati area. I think the closest is Trenton, Ohio has one right now, and that's the closest one to us, and they've built a lot in Indiana, some new stores. So if you haven't been over Mount Carmel lately, it's basically catty corner to the old, the Kroger store that's over there, and there's a Sunoco station on the other corner, which now they've kind of done a renovation project to improve their location. So that's good to see. So we had been waiting for them to get started for a long time, and they're really going fast. So
They're moving.
It's a nice project.
They're moving along.
And then I did, from our zoning department, I did receive a letter from some residents of Crescent Drive and Vixen Drive, Red Fox Drive and Tracy Court. I believe we have some people here tonight who may want to speak on the same topics. I'll hold back from mentioning anything in this letter, and then if these items aren't covered, I'll, I'll certainly point them out. But I appreciate those residents sending this letter in, and I did get a copy of it. Also got some comments from people on Facebook, so I'm very aware of some of the concerns and issues that are going on there. So with that, if there's no other report, comments, I'll open the floor for public comments. You're welcome to make a comment. Doesn't mean the board necessarily answer all your questions, but we'll certainly take down the information you've given us so we can get back to you or, or comment as necessary. So is there anyone who would like to speak tonight on the, on the topic? Okay, so if you speak, all we ask is you, sir, you can be first. Come up and give us your name and address for the record, and then go ahead and make your comments. Since there's a lot of people here, we'll try to keep the comments as brief as possible, and that way everybody gets a chance to, to say something. Okay? So come on up. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you for having us. My name is Tom Wardman. I live on Crescent Drive, 1009 Crescent Drive. I'm actually not a resident of Union Township. I live in, to the neighbor of the south Pierce Township.
Okay.
And I am here on behalf of the construction going on at the end of Crescent. I don't have a problem with construction. It's, it's progress. I'm okay with that. What we are concerned about, it's a very narrow road, and the only access they're making for this store is onto a very narrow residential street, and it's right at the end of Crescent. And so some of our concerns, one, if that's the only access, how are they going to get a 50-foot trailer in and out of that store to load and unload without literally blocking Crescent Drive? Not to mention, we have Merwin Elementary School in Gaskins. We get traffic influxing in and out of Crescent Drive for that school, and if we've got a tractor trailer blocking that, which creates a hazard on 125 with cars pulling in and out, that is some of our concerns. It is a very narrow road. I'm not going to pretend to be a civil engineer and know what the solution is. Another problem is you have east and westbound traffic on State Route 125. There has been multiple close calls on State Route 125, and we have the Iron Skillet Restaurant, the photo store directly across the highway. If you have westbound traffic, I'm sorry, eastbound traffic traveling down 125, moving into the turning lane, and yet you have westbound traffic coming from the east, moving to turn into Crescent, it is a head-on collision. And the cars are going to be moving 45 to 50 miles an hour. I'm not going to pretend to know the solution. I just hope somebody would look into it before they finish the project and maybe find another entrance or exit, some way to get it, and maybe to just have it go directly out on the 125, get them off the side street and have less traffic turning in and out of Crescent Drive based on the store. That's all I had. Thank you.
Sir, if you please give us your name and address for the record?
Yes. My name is Tommy Emery. I live at 1020 Vixen Drive. It's not the go over, the same thing he just went over, but we do have a signatures of 158 residents that live on those four streets, Crescent, Red Fox, Vixen, and Tracy Court. So you have 158. It's not just 10 or 12 residents here. Last month, three weeks ago, we had 17 residents showed up for a trustee meet, or for a meeting out here for the zoning commission. There was nothing posted in the newsletter, nothing posted online about the meeting not being held or being canceled. We got out here at 6:30. We waited till 7 o'clock, and somebody noticed a sign on the door that said, "No, no meeting tonight because there's nothing on the agenda." At the very least, it should have been updated on the website prior to the night of the meeting. It is just, you have a lot of residents that are really upset over this project. Not the project. We had no problem with the Dollar General Store being there. It's the no access, no turn lane, and what we're asking for is a turn lane on Crescent Drive. And when I came up, I spoke to Mr. Wright, and he was very helpful to me in giving me information. He referred me to the county. The county referred me to the state. The state referred me back to, to the township. Everybody's pointing, everybody in, everybody different directions as far as where you get your answers from. So where we're hoping by coming here, you can direct us. If you can't give us an answer, that's fine. Tell us who we can go to to give us an answer. We've been told that 125 is a state limited access highway, which they restrict the number of entrances and exits. We have a list of 33 entrances off, off of 125 in Union Township, 33 different locations where they have access off of 125. We have a list of thirty-three entrances off, off of one twenty-five in Union Township, thirty-three different locations where they have access off of one twenty-five. Even where there's an adjacent side street, so we think it's, and Mr. Wright told me that it was not a township's interest because they would probably be sued by the Dollar General Store, because the Dollar General Store was only a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, and would probably cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put in a turn lane on Crescent. Well, that should be incumbent upon the, the store that's, that's being built there, not necessarily the township or the owner, or the homeowners that live there. And like the gentleman said, we have an elementary school in our subdivision, we have a lot of kids that walk back and forth to school, not to mention the traffic that backs up on Red Fox by parents dropping off their kids, picking up their kids. They line up the entire street on Red Fox to pick up their kids, starting at three o'clock to pick up their kids, and that's fine, because I understand they live too close to, to have access to busing, so therefore they have to drop off their kids in person. And they're elementary kids, so you just can't say, "We have walked to school or walked back from school," parents have to pick them up. And for a hundred and fifty-eight residents to say they're concerned about this, it don't, it shouldn't just be blowed off to saying, "Well, there's nothing we can do because the state says, or the township says, or the county says." So we would like an answer, um, and as far as posting meetings, when the meetings are canceled, I mean, I've been there, I've been a resident at that address for twenty-three years, this is my first time I felt compelled enough over, over an issue to come to your meeting in, not, not totally, um, inspired by it. So that's, that's, that's my concern and the other residents' concerns, so. I do thank Mr. Wright and Mr. Taylor for cleaning out some of the bushes on Crescent, however, if it was in your house or my house, it would not be acceptable. But I was under, talking to Mr. Wright, he says that they're going to come back and clean it up more in addition to what they already did, so hopefully that happens, so.
Did you want to leave those signatures with us?
Sure, who'd I give those to?
You can give them, um, Mr. Campbell here, he's our, he'll put those in the record, so we can have a chance to review that.
Was real sure as far as the, the layout of the signature, so we put the names, addresses, phone numbers, and the, you know, town, what, what street they lived on and their addresses, so.
Well, it's not that big an area, so we can find everybody.
Yep, we're a pretty, pretty small community.
Yeah, and it's a nice neighborhood, I agree.
Yep.
And, um, we have a really good relationship, first of all, with West Claremont Schools, and, um, that's one thing we can talk to them, coordinate with them to make sure, um, that they're doing everything they can to, you know, limit the traffic and the issues around the school, um, so we'll, we'll make sure that they're alerted to what's going on, and we'll talk to them. Um, Ohio Pike is a state highway.
Right, we all understand that.
We are limited, um, you're right, there's a lot of businesses that have entrances, um, a lot of those were prior to the current regulations, the state.
Well, if, if I can make one comment about that, Mr. Wright uses an example to me, and it wasn't necessarily Mr. Wright, it was a person in the office behind you when I was up there, that used the example of White Castle as, as a residential street coming off of Beauchamp, where they put that, the access road off of Beauchamp into there. However, what she failed to mention is, they do in fact have a turn lane coming off, coming out of the, the store onto Beauchamp, there is a turn lane. And that's exactly what we're asking for on Crescent, is that turn lane.
Well, in that location, there's also a Freshest Restaurant and Hotel, so there's.
But that was, that was the example that she gave us, is that was a precedent for not, for having an, an access road into a residential community.
Yeah.
And that's our, we understand that you can't put it on one twenty-five per the state regulations, but if you can't put it on one twenty-five, we're just asking for at least a turn lane on Crescent coming out of there, so it doesn't back up traffic, doesn't cause traffic accidents there on Beauchamp Avenue, and it doesn't make a detour through our community, so. And in my little note there, I put a forty-foot delivery truck, I was corrected by one of our residents who is a truck driver, and unfortunately, he cannot be here tonight, but he says his delivery trucks are fifty-three foot, so.
I think, I think that is correct, and, uh, that's something that I have, uh, mentioned to Mr. Wright, we'll definitely, definitely review that. We would not allow them to block the street with a delivery truck or anything.
Well, they're already blocking the street with construction trucks, I actually witnessed, uh, a, a construction trailer unloading equipment on, on Crescent. I actually went into a ditch line on the right-hand side of the road because there wasn't enough room for the commercial trailer, tractor trailer, and my vehicle to pass, and then I'm thinking to myself, what happens when two school buses try to pass each other on that road? You can't do it, that road's not wide enough, so.
Okay.
That's our concern.
All right, I appreciate it.
All right.
Yes, please come up, if you don't mind, please give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Marty Shermer, I'm a twenty-six-year resident of nine nine two Vixen, which is near Crescent. Uh, I actually am a civil engineer, forty-year construction veteran, and here to tell you that the intersection has a very poor risk profile. Um, some of your safety professionals, police and fire have turned down, here's just a normal sedan, and you have to come off of fifty miles an hour and try to make this turn. Granted, there is a little bit of width here at the end of Crescent in the plan, but it's going to be exacerbated, and I'm concerned about the safety as a long-time resident. Um, I'll try to keep this brief, you know, the cat's out of the bag, what do you do now, what are the potential solutions? I would like to hear if the board is willing to authorize, to study the situation, come up with what, uh, you know, potential solutions there are. You've heard one, it's a good one, you know, a Dollar General's not going to want that, it's money, it's time, it eats up their parking, it doesn't fit their model, they're not going to like it. Uh, but you guys are the boss, right, so what are all the potential alternatives, that's one of them, to implement some risk reduction, and then what's the process, you know, I don't know what the process is here moving forward, if you say, hey, let's have a study and, and see what's going on, so. As a resident, I'd like to know if you're willing to study it, and, uh, what's the process, thank you.
Well, in this case, just so you know, that the township's role is to, uh, approve whether the business zoning is appropriate for that type of business. Uh, we don't control, uh, the design of the roads, that, that falls back to the county engineer. So they would have to review the, the plans and the process, and that's something that we would get with them on, um, to make sure that it's been reviewed properly and, uh, to check this all out. So, um, if there's anything that the township can do, um, because the, the drive there isn't, is a township street, we'll certainly look at what we can do from our end, but the, the next step for me would be to discuss it with the county engineer, just make sure that they've reviewed it and they, they're aware of the whole situation, that, and the, we're going to, the concerns you've brought to me, I'm going to send to him. Uh, Jeremy Evans is our county engineer, and we'll make sure that, uh, you know, everybody's looking at this to make sure that it's being done properly, so.
Thank you.
Yes. And if you could, uh, give us your name and address also, that would be appreciated.
My name is, uh, Rich Glisten.
Was that again?
Rich Glisten, G L I S S O N, I'm a resident of Union Township, have been for twelve years. I moved here in January of two thousand and nine, I live at eight sixteen Massachusetts Drive, I'm a United States Navy veteran. Mr. Logue, I know you're also a Navy veteran.
No. You're setting, you're setting me up for a joke there.
I am, I am.
Mr. McGee is there.
I'm Navy, deep Marine Corps.
I know, but we all write, the check comes from the same place.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good humor, the Under Services there.
Um, I'm also a full-time firefighter for the city of Norwood for, uh, the past twenty-one years.
Thank you for that.
No problem, um, I would like to thank the township trustees for proposing a fire safety levy, uh, safety services levy, I know that can be political suicide in today's climate, so thank you for that. Um, I'd like to thank the police chief and the fire chief and their command staff for all their hard work and dedication to the township and its citizens. Um, I came here tonight to share my support for this levy. Um, if I'm not mistaken, the last time there was a safety services levy, it was passed over a decade ago. Um, that levy was projected to last about five years, so it's obvious, it's a testament to their, and to their, um, ability to be fiscally responsible with the money that they're given, um, there's no reason to believe that we shouldn't trust them to receive the same kind of results with a future levy. So I'd like to talk about, to you about my experiences as a public servant, working for an employee, employer, and a city administration that cannot and has not passed an operating levy. Cost will outpace revenue increases, robbing Peter to pay Paul will become the norm, services like CPR training, stop the bleed, gun safety, self-defense, fire safety, smoke detector programs, um, you're on fire, which the kids absolutely love, if you're not familiar with that program. Uh, those will all be a thing of the past, training will be no more, response times will suffer, we'll have issues with manpower. Voluntary employee turnover will skyrocket, people will leave for greener pastures, there will be few, fewer available replacements because top-notch recruits will accept jobs in other departments that are flourishing. A vicious cycle of hiring, training, and equipping new officers, only to have them jump to better opportunities, will begin. Emergency vehicles and equipment will quickly fall into disrepair, national accreditation, well, you can forget that too. Paychecks will be missed, I know personally, employee morale will plummet, I know personally, home values will decrease, insurance rates will increase, and last but not least, the most important people of all, you and I, the taxpayers, will suffer. These aren't scare tactics, these are my reality for the last twenty-one years, serving the city of Norwood, watching that budget decline, revenues not increasing enough to keep up, um, in an occupation where people are called because, uh, people need help navigating through some of the worst moments of their lives, the last thing that I want my police officers and firefighters to be thinking about are all of the things that I just mentioned. Because they're on my mind and every one of my coworkers' minds, and have been for at least the last fifteen years. That's not something I would like to see happen here, so I'll leave you with one quote from billionaire Richard Branson. He says, "Train people well enough so they can leave, treat them well enough so they don't want to." We have some of the best firefighters and police officers in the state of Ohio, let's hope we can keep it that way. Please get out and vote for this levy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Yes, please come up, would you give us your name and address for the record, we'll appreciate that.
My name is, uh, James Malmadall, I go by Jack, and I live at one zero zero six Vixen Drive. I think Tom did a pretty good job of explaining what our concerns are, my, my concern really is that Crescent is such a narrow street. Uh, and if you get any kind of delivery trucks, um, I've had that experience where I'm trying to turn left onto, uh, Crescent, and there's a UPS truck there. And I've got to wait for him to, to pull out, especially if he's not all the way to the left or to the right, uh, so that, that's my biggest concern. I, I have no problem with the store being built there, in fact, my wife is kind of excited about it, but, um, it, it's just that road, it's just too narrow, it's an old road. My street, uh, Vixen, you can get three cars across the street, you can't do that on, on Crescent, it's just too darn narrow, too darn narrow, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, please come up, if you give your name and address for the record, appreciate it.
Uh, my name is Jay Sutter, uh, three eight two four Crescent Drive, only been there for about a year. There are surprising a number of tra, a lot of traffic on that road. The big issue I have with their entrance is, it's so close to one twenty-five, from the entrance of the store to one twenty-five, you can get maybe two cars. It's going to cause a huge backup, if anybody's coming, you know, wanting to come in, turn into the store, there's a few cars there, going to block that entrance. Blocking anything coming in from one twenty-five, along with small road and the blockage of the bushes, trees, whatever it is, on the corner. You really can't, uh, can't see much. There's, you know, potential problems there, people pulling in, cars there, and not stopping quick enough, coming in from, you know, forty-five mile an hour, turning in. So it's just, to me, it looks like a logjam, that's, that's all I had on that.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Well taken. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, please come up.
Hello, gentlemen, uh, move my mask.
Yeah, sure, and, uh, please give us your name and address.
Sure, uh, my name's Colin, I live at, uh, five six five Sunny Lane, um.
What's the last name?
Joyce.
Okay.
Um, boy, this feels like being in front of a board, uh.
Just relax, we're all friends.
Yeah, uh, Mr. McGee, I'd like to thank you for your service, um.
Thank you.
Mr. Logue, hurrah.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
So I'm here to talk about, uh, you know, a little bit of personal liberties, uh, I just bought the house here, uh, February, uh, got out in September. Uh, obviously, first-time homeowner, um, discovering a few things that, you know, I thought about this wonderful country that we live in are, uh, well, different than I originally thought, um, joined the Marine Corps because I believe in the Constitution, and personal liberties, um. I'm a little confused, um, because I was told a few things, uh, led astray on a few other areas, and I've just, I'm, I'm here out of ignorance, uh, and trying to get some answers, or at least get pointed in the correct direction, and hope I don't get pointed somewhere different.
Okay.
Um, so with everything going on with COVID, um, I moved in during COVID, and I decided, I looked at the grocery stores and I decided, I'm going to take my own, uh, safety, my family's own safety and ability to self-sustain into my own hands, uh, I started looking into getting chickens. Um, I live on point seven of an acre with a giant backyard, um, you only need three square foot for, for one chicken. Um, it's kind of ridiculous, I'm up here talking about chickens, uh, I never thought I'd have to learn this much about chickens, my wife is ecstatic. Um, I, I'm, I'm confused in that an anonymous letter was sent to the zoning commission. Um, I talked to Mr. Wright, and I, I, maybe I'm just too dumb to understand, but I was told many different things. First, it was, I need two acres at least for any amount of chickens, seems kind of ridiculous when in the metropolitan city of Cincinnati, you need a quarter of an acre. Metropolitan city of Cincinnati, um, every other county around does not require X amount of land to own chickens. Personal sustainability, we're looking at all the logistics with COVID going on, everything's falling apart, shelves have gone bare. Uh, price for eggs, just basic eggs, used to be a dollar, now it's gone up to a dollar fifty, two dollars for just the basic eggs. Doesn't seem like a lot, we're talking about fifty percent to a hundred percent increase. Um, I'm here looking for answers, like I said before, uh, and again, this feels like a board, I don't like boards. That's why I got out of the corporal, because I couldn't, I couldn't pass the damn board for sergeant. Um, but I just don't understand why there's this law in the first place, seems like red tape that doesn't need to be there. Um, I also don't understand why it costs three hundred and seventy-five dollars just to have a variance herd. That's kind of ridiculous, on top of, if I wanted to build a coop, which I'm currently building right now, and got told that I have a structure when all I have is posts in the ground, and now I have to take those out when it's not a structure. I got those in the ground so I can measure correctly, and now, I mean, told, I gotta rip those out. So my situation is that an anonymous letter was sent, I know who sent it, he's not my neighbor. I've already talked to all of my neighbors, they are ecstatic that I was going to get chickens, nobody knew that this was a law, an ordinance, whatever it is, okay? And then I had some, to us, random inspector come out, um, my wife doesn't like strangers, especially right now, she doesn't like strangers. She gets very anxious, and now, um, he comes onto our property, he walks all around our property. He says, "All right, well, I don't see any chickens, I just see you have a structure here," and he's got a camera with him, he says, "If I had found chickens, I would have had to find you." That doesn't seem very, um, judicial, in the fact that I can just find you right there, then and there, um, maybe that's just me. Then, he goes away, he says, "I'll send you a letter with all the information," I ask him, "What do I need to get acceptance, variance, whatever?" He says, "There is none, you need about two acres," then I call, and they say, "You need at least one acre," and I talked to Mr. Wright, he told me, "You need about five acres." What's the acreage I need, I, I, I mean, nobody knows, the guy who comes to my house for the express. What's the acreage I need? I mean, nobody knows. The guy who comes to my house for the express reason of, "I have chickens and I'm not supposed to," all he knows is that I'm not supposed to have chickens. Seems to me that I'm going to be going into law enforcement. If I'm going somewhere and I don't know what the law is, flip through a code book or something like that, figure out what the damn law is, so I know what's going on. I don't mean to get heated, but we get a little charged up about some things sometimes.
Okay, well, we can't solve this case here tonight. We appreciate the information. Mr. Wright, do you have this gentleman's phone number and contact information?
I do not have his contact information.
If you can wait till after the meeting, I'll be glad to speak to you and get that information from you.
Sure. No, I mean, on the 15th.
What I want to do is make sure, first of all, that you get a copy of the code. It's a zoning code. And that you could read it for yourself and...
No, I haven't.
Okay. The reason for having a zoning code is to prevent issues where, you know, maybe you're okay with having chickens today. Maybe the neighbor next door is okay with having them. But they sell their house and somebody else moves in, and they're not okay. They don't want farm animals living next to them. So that's where these issues, that's why you have a zoning code, so that you have a standard set of rules for everybody.
I understand that completely. I understand.
So we want to make sure that, you know, you can take the proper steps to do what you are trying to do, and that that would fit the zoning code. But that's why we have it. Otherwise, you know, there could be issues that we can't even think of what they would be tonight if people started having farm animals all over the township in their yards. So we have to be careful about that and just make sure everybody understands, you know, what they have to do. And I'd be glad to get this information to you and speak to you further about it. But I would like to have a chance to review it with our zoning department.
I completely understand. My, so I came here for two express things. I apologize. I get heated and ramble a little bit. So I'm really sorry.
I don't think you're heated yet, but we appreciate your comments.
Internally.
You're passionate about your personal freedoms.
So I have, I got this real estate law book, and I figured it's got to be some sort of nuisance, correct? It's a private nuisance. However, our court noted, every person is bound to make a reasonable use of his, of his, his property so as to, I'm sorry. Every person is bound to make a reasonable use of his property so as to occasion no unnecessary damage or annoyance to his neighbor. I've spoken to my neighbors. One thinks they're adorable and cute and can't wait for us to get them. The other side is really looking forward to home fresh eggs. Another guy doesn't care because he lives on the complete other side of my property and his property. So as for neighbors, there's no problem there. And I've already expressed, if they ever have a problem, please let me know. We'll try and work it out. The other issue I have, right, that was, that's just getting them in general. Okay? The other issue I have is I received a notice. I was expecting, hey, these are the codes that you can't, that state you can't, so that you can look further into getting chickens or figuring out what to do. I'm a little concerned because it states in here, upon my inspection, I found that there were several chickens being kept in a rear detached accessory building. I also found an illegal addition was being constructed, attached to the accessory structure for what appears to be a permanent addition for a chicken coop. I don't have any chickens. And they're telling me that they're going to come back to my house on the 15th. I already told you, my wife doesn't appreciate people coming on our property because she doesn't know them. So I'm a little confused as to what was explained to me was, he came to my property, he inspected it. Now he told me I have chickens. I don't have chickens. Now he has to come back for a 15 and a 45-day inspection upon no actual evidence of getting anything. But now I have somebody coming to my property on the 15th and potentially freaking out my wife. I'm just confused as to why this is okay.
Well, first of all, like I said before, we can't solve your case here tonight.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, again, I'm just looking for answers.
Should not freak out because she knows the date and time that they're going to be coming out to your property.
Well, it doesn't say a time. It just says the 15th.
We'll certainly make sure she's aware that we're coming, if that's necessary.
That, yeah, that would be awesome. I just, a time.
You know, the zoning inspection, our zoning department does have to check properties for violations of zoning codes.
I completely understand.
So what I would like to do is get more information from our zoning department, talk to them, then I'll talk to you. And the other trustees are free to talk to you as well. But I'm sure we can figure out the best course forward for you. And we appreciate you bringing all this information to us, but we just don't have all the facts in front of us. We can't hear this case tonight.
I understand. I just came here looking, I have, I have the variance application already. I'm fully prepared to do it. I'm just confused as to why I have people coming to my house that, no offense, if I don't invite you onto my property, I don't want you on my property.
Okay. But, you know, the residents, really, in the long run, the residents control what the zoning codes are as prescribed, but there's our state restrictions from state law. But, you know, if down the road, a lot of residents want to have chickens, I mean, that's what would happen. But right now, that's, the rules are what the rules are today in our zoning code.
Which is why I have the variance application.
Adopt a zoning code to change that or get a variance like you're trying to maybe do. So we're more than glad to try to resolve this in a peaceful way and get you the information you need so you can make the best decision.
Which is what I want, from what I understand, in order to change a local ordinance, right, I would need to start a petition? To, to...
You could, but you could just, you could come to a zoning meeting and express that you would like to see changes. And the zoning board's made up of local citizens. If they agree with you, they would, they would make recommendations to the board of trustees. And if you have a good case, you can make a case to the board of trustees too. And if we decide that it's needed to change the zoning code in any way, we, every, so often, we do make adjustments to it, depending on changing conditions.
Okay. So how do I, how do I start that? I have to come to a zoning meeting? I, again, ignorance, so I'm just trying to get information.
Yeah, I would attend a zoning meeting and, but I think the first step would be, talk to me after the meeting so I get your phone number, and we can get contact information together and figure out the best way to get.
Understood.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Absolutely. So want to be able to hear from you and talk after the meeting.
So if you're able to hang around to the end of the meeting, we'll get your information so that we can make contact.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Yes, please come up. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for your service. My name's Craig Killian. I live at 1012 Vixen Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio 45245. And I'm here tonight to voice my concerns on the project of 125 and Crescent Drive, the dollar store that's going in. I had to go get my son from soccer, so I don't know what has been said from other people. I know that it was a flat part of land that was there for a long time. There were a couple signs there. There was a J.A. Troutman sign. And one day we come and all the trees are gone, and they put up a sign that says Ryan Homes. So it was a little misleading. I think if you see a property that's getting worked on, and then you see that sign coming in, I think a lot of us around that area figured that they were going to build some homes or condos, and we weren't that concerned. When we found out that there was a Dollar General store going in there, we knew there would be a lot more traffic. And we found that the only entrance and exit is on Crescent. In some of the looking that we did, talking to the zoning commissioner here and the state zoning commissioner, the state had said, and again, I could be wrong on this, is what we heard, that entrance/exit on 125 was something the state did not want to have. That they were going to have it on Crescent, and that was a county thing. But the state approved the project. So the state saying, "We don't have anything to do with it. It's the county," but they went ahead and approved it. If you go up and down 125 there, on almost every corner property, you have an entrance and an exit off of 125, and you have an entrance and exit on that perpendicular street that goes off 125 into the same business. I've seen two trucks, cement trunk come out of there on the turn, went into the ditch. So I don't see how you'd be able to get a 26-foot box truck, let alone a 53-footer, off that turnoff 125 into there without, I don't know, just causing havoc. So I guess our concern is, why can't we get that entrance and exit off 125 to relieve some of that traffic off of Crescent? Crescent's a dead-end street, and Vixen comes off of that too. So that's my concerns.
Okay, I appreciate that. And just to reiterate what we said before, the state of Ohio, that is a state highway, they control that access. It's not up to us here to, to change that. And they have, they do have an approval process that they get, that we have to send to them, and they have to sign off on. And the county engineer has a planning department too that reviews these plans. So we can't tell the state we're going to do this. That's really their decision. So if there was going to be a change, like you're suggesting, like to, you know, another exit, the state would have to approve that.
Then how do we get that going?
I could try to find that out. I'm not sure who would contact with the state of Ohio and ODOT. It's obviously, they're a big organization.
Sure.
But we could try to, if there's someone that you could be in contact with, we could certainly get that to you. If you want to wait around after the meeting, I can get your contact information. If there's someone we could have you talk to, I can forward that to you.
And again, you know, when, that's what we're trying to understand, is the state saying that can't be anything on 125, it's going to be on Crescent, we don't have anything to do with that. That's county. But the state approved it. So how did that permit get approved by the state and not the county?
I don't know all the, what the state would approve on it. There's probably just a portion that they would have to approve since it's on a state highway.
But that entrance on Crescent isn't.
Correct.
So that's, that's...
That's off the state route. That's correct.
But from our understanding, the state approved that, which is, it's kind of weird.
They may have just approved the plan in general. Mr. Wright maybe could answer that, but they wouldn't, I mean, they wouldn't prove that part of the plan, other than it makes their standard for what they're expecting. And some of the other businesses you're talking about are older businesses, and they're trying to, going forward, they had changed their model, and they're trying to limit access to 125, to cut down on possible traffic issues.
Well, I mean, we've had a fatality there that was in the last year, year and a half, right, right on that entrance off of Crescent from 125. So with increasing the amount of traffic, it's, it's hard pulling out of Crescent on 125, especially if you're going left. So I'm just thinking, the more that we could get another entrance/exit there would relieve some of that Crescent, and just would be safer for everybody.
Well, that's something we can certainly ask about. And I could certainly try to get you a contact information so that you could at least contact someone, and they could explain it better to you.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, please.
My name's Wanda Rose, R-O-H-S. I live at 3883 Crescent Drive. And I spoke to someone from ODOT, and they said that if a business comes in and there's a side street, that they have to head the exit onto that side street. Why, there is about 15 or 20 businesses that have both, all up and down Beechmont Avenue in that area. So why can't we have it?
Well, like I said before, I'm sure that that was prior to them changing their restrictions somewhere. Some of those businesses have been there for many, many, many years. And I can't answer for the state. I'm not the state of Ohio. I'm just trying to speculate where they're coming from.
If we had both, it would help a whole lot. They already have, they already have a gravel, they already have a gravel road. They're accessing on and off of Beechmont, doing their construction. So why can't we have a little road there? That's all.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't say trusting the girl. So I know we're in the public comment section, so don't want to, you know, take us off track from that. But from hearing that example, you know, that we've heard an observation, you know, from the public, you know, would the benefit there be to have our paving company be able on, be able to extend the width basically at that entrance on Crescent? And if that would alleviate any of the concerns? If any of you saw Mr. Guy step up and step away with Mr. Wright a minute ago, that was a part of, I believe what they're referencing or trying to take a look at to address. You know, we heard the course of action coming forward from the engineer earlier. I believe he, I don't see him in here anymore. The engineer stepped, he stepped out. You know, but he was referencing a course of action to take, you know, time to study or do some due diligence. You know, I think that's kind of the right step there as far as hearing the concern, addressing that, seeing what we can do to mitigate between the state of Ohio, ODOT, you know, what the township's able to be, able to be involved with, and if it can provide that, any relief there. You know, what comes to mind, and I want to ask to Mr. Wright, Mr. Guy's too, you know, what the similarities that we may have with Oxier Drive and with, and how does that work? Because I know that has been working well for the turnoff there. It's another similar situation in the township. But just to, just to that extent of having the ability to do some due diligence to be able to, you know, potentially look at extending that pavement, and what we may, may be able to learn out of that. So Mr. Guy, or Mr. Wright as well?
Well, I'm not exactly sure what the question is, but first of all, when the reference was talking to ODOT about an access point off of State Route 125, their, their position on the access points, I've been doing this for a while, is that they are, if there is a potential access point off of a side street, they will not provide an access point off of State Route 125. And that they will limit, and they will reduce and remove access points and consolidate access points on 125. We've seen that from the western boundaries to the eastern boundaries where they've actually eliminated drives off of 125. There's a host of them. I can tell you the people that have lived around here for more than 25 years. There were twice as many 25 years ago, and they eliminate them as the properties develop. Secondly, on Crescent Drive, specifically for that, I, I think there, you know, could be the possibility that we could have our paving company, we're in, we're at the end of our paving program for 2020 right now. And we have a, we do that on a quantities bid. We could go out there now and have them take a look at that and potentially extend the limits of the pavement on that within the right-of-way right now. I doubt that there's going to be enough right-of-way on that to provide an additional lane. But as people have stated, I mean, I've been there a bunch of times. I used to go to the pretzel shop there. When I was, I miss, you know, it was great. The pretzels were unbelievable. So I stopped eating carbs and got this way. And, but I think that we can add, we, we can add some pavement there that, on that. I don't, I think it would be unrealistic for me to say that we're going to be able to get an additional lane there. But adding pavement anywhere on that will be a huge benefit, I think, to Crescent Lane, particularly in the turning movements on that. Not being a traffic engineer, but had driven for a few years, the deceleration off of 125 onto Crescent Lane, if you had some additional pavement on there, it would make it significantly safer. And also allowing the vehicles to move as far to the right as they were exiting Crescent Lane onto 125, whether they were headed eastbound or westbound on, onto that would be possible. So if the board would want to move to direct us to do that, we could do that now. Take a look at that, get a, get a cost to that, you know, as long as... Take a look at that, get a, get a cost to that, you know, as long as it was under ten thousand dollars, we could do that immediately and, and provide some relief for that. I just think it's gonna, it, it would be unrealistic for me to say that we're gonna be able to get enough right-of-way there to add an additional lane onto that. But I, I, I think that we could alleviate that or present some positive change to that pretty quickly. But that would be up to the board.
If you do something under ten thousand, if one specifically need a vote from us, is that correct?
Correct, I have that, we have the authority to, to do that. And we could, you know, we could ask our, you know, our paving, we could go out there, mark the limits of the right-of-way, do the extensions on that and, you know, for ten thousand dollars and on the throat of that, that, that could be a significant amount of pavement that we could do on that. And I'm not gonna say that's the end-all, be-all, but it certainly would be better than what is there. But I, I also think that if you do call ODOT, you're starting to call District Eight, talk to them about that. But I, I'm not speaking for them, but I believe that they're gonna give you a consistent message that they're not gonna provide an access point off of one twenty-five for, for that. And the approval process that they talk about is we submit plans to them and as long as they're not in, speaking of double negative non-compliance with their regulations, they'll approve it. So, if we, if there would have been an access point shown on that plan, they would have denied it. And they would have said, no, you can't move forward with that project. Since there was not an access point on one twenty-five and there was an access point off Crescent, which is consistent with their regulations, they approved it on that. And that, that's the only approval process they have. It's not really an approval, it's just not disapproving that, that condition for that.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So, I would be okay with you exploring that option to see what that does. Does any other thoughts from the board members?
I, I agree, if that can be done, that, at the cost you're, you're talking about, ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, absolutely agree with that as far as, you know, being able to recognize what type of, you know, solution. I mean, it's not a full solution right now, but at least to alleviate some concerns and take next steps to understand, you know, what, what the impact can be. And again, that keeps it, the threshold, the approval threshold that has to come to the board is, and it's ten thousand dollars or more, so that's, yes, sir. Or Trusty McGraw, I'll let you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Tommy Emery, I spoke earlier.
Yeah.
Ten twenty Vixen Drive. I think one of our concerns there is, and this is, this goes back to, to day one. And I forget who it was, it made a comment about, there was a residential house there on that lot and then it was removed. Trees were removed, the lot was leveled, and all of a sudden a Ryan Holmes residential sign goes up. And every single person that lives on those streets, I cannot tell you two people, be lucky to tell you one person that thought that was gonna be a Dollar General store or any kind of commercial store. The fact that was, they set up, Mr. Wright told me it was posted in the newsletter, the website, in the Claremont Carrier that the, this Dollar General store was going in there. You may get the carrier at your house, you may get current updates on your website, we don't. It's just like the meetings that was canceled at the last minute, posted on the door. Nothing was posted on the website that those meetings were canceled. It's just like, nobody knew that a Dollar General store was going in there until after construction, it was well underway. And had we known that upfront as residents who lived there, we would have presented our concerns before the construction started and before all this stuff got approved. It's like you're, you're putting a cart before the horse, you approve it and then you have all these problems. If we knew ahead of time, a lot of these problems could have been addressed prior to this.
I appreciate that and those are good comments to make. We try our best to get information out, because first there was a zoning hearing about this and then there was a trustee hearing. There was two different meetings.
Well, the zoning hearings, like I say, they post notice, notice on the door the night of and says there's not gonna be a meeting.
Right, that was, this would have been prior to that and to that night. If there's no business before the zoning board, they, they, they don't have a meeting then, they cancel it. So, they only have the meeting if there's business to come before them. So, one place, our website does list these things and also Facebook, the stuff that gets posted on there too.
I don't put anything on Facebook, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't trust Facebook with my personal information.
Well, hopefully you trust our website and you can regularly look at our website.
Well, I wish I could, but you don't post things current, so.
Well, I think they do the best they can to trust, to keep things up to date.
Absolutely.
So.
Trusty McGraw, can we open the floor a little bit to Mr. Wright? Can you speak a little bit about the principal overlay?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Logue, the, the site is Zone B1, it was Zone B1 in nineteen fifty-nine with the inception of zoning. So, the site's always been commercial. Up and down one twenty-five, we have numerous residential lots because at the time, they allowed what's called pyramid zoning, where you were allowed to have multiple uses within a defined district. At some point pyramid zoning, the trend went away from pyramid zoning and went to more defined uses. So, what you have then is you have kind of vestiges of a previous era where you have residential properties or quasi-residential properties, which in the case Mr. Guy's referenced, it was a pretzel stand and I believe the gentleman, did he live there too? And, and so it was a split-use property. And so, so as these, as these, as the corridor continues to develop and mature and traffic counts increase, what happens is these residential properties turn over. And then, you know, the house was demolished, it was acquired, obviously, for future commercial use. To address the Ryan Holmes sign, we did not permit the Ryan Holmes sign. That was an illegal sign and it references a project not in Union Township.
Well, that was a deception. Everybody there thought it was gonna be because the sign was such a big sign.
And we've since had them take it down.
Well, we realized that, it's now been taken down.
And so, you know, at the end of the day, that project went through the overlay because of a couple of relief requirements that they needed. Specifically, they, they seek relief for signage and there's, what happens on the one twenty-five corridor is because the parcels are so shallow, there's a, there's setback issues that typically need to be abated through that process. And that goes through a single hearing and that, that reference that I indicated to you was in the sun. We post those cases on the website as the upcoming zoning hearings, we update, update those monthly, whether it's BZA, zoning commissioner, trustees. And so, that overlay process grants certain entitlements because there's, there's a section in the code that allows for that because it recognizes that in order to have orderly development, you have, you have to meet certain conditions and all those things. So, it went through that single administrative hearing where a couple of, of relief or administrative modifications were granted. But otherwise, the use is a permitted use. It's permitted use and it's been a permitted use since nineteen fifty-nine, retail.
Well, like I say, that, that, to, to the residents, it seemed deceptive with the sign. Like I said, he's not a single resident in that, in that entire subdivision that had any concept that a Dollar General, anything other than a Ryan Holmes development, because that's what the big sign said. And it went at the same time that they started construction on the property. That was the problem. It's like you put this big sign in your front yard and next thing you know bulldozers are in there taking out trees and tearing down the house. Everybody's under the expectation that that's what's gonna go on that lot. And if we had known that prior, the, these issues would have been addressed prior to permits being issued and, and, and all that kinda stuff. So, that's, that's where we're at with that, so.
Well, like Mr. Wright said, we didn't authorize the sign and weren't aware that it had gone up.
I hope somebody find, I hope somebody find Ryan Holmes for the illegal sign.
You can find.
Because it caused a lot of problems.
And that, those part of the typical process anyways, we're going throughout the township and, and recognizing signs that are permitted or signs that are not permitted and having them removed. So, that is something that, again, welcome to hear and have the calls, calls in from the community on if it's seen that, that we're unaware of. So, Mr. Wright's department does fantastic work with that.
So, anyone else who wanted to speak? Please come up and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for listening to our comments. Mike Donahue, thirty-eight oh nine Red Fox Drive. This is the neighborhood that connects to this site where the Dollar, Dollar General's going in. I just wanna encourage everybody here on the board and everybody at the Dais there, don't take our word for what we're telling you about the width of this road and our safety concerns. Take a drive over there. Turn east, you know, go east on one twenty-five and make a right turn onto Crescent Drive. And imagine there's a truck there. Imagine somebody is going too fast and they're trying to make the right turn onto Crescent Drive. Imagine the things that we're telling you are gonna take place because I'm really concerned as a homeowner there, I've been there since late two thousand and two. I'm concerned that there's gonna be accidents, people are gonna get injured, and it doesn't have to be that way. It's up to you to fix this problem before it really becomes a problem. I'm really concerned that people are gonna get hurt and I live in this neighborhood. Even though I live in Pierce Township, my neighborhood directly connects onto this street. I can walk to that corner in three to five minutes. And I'm concerned for the safety of what is being done there. And I wanna encourage everybody here to take a drive over there. Don't take our word for what we're saying. Take a drive over there and really see what we're talking about. And I hope that encourages you to do the right thing to make improvements to Crescent Drive so that we don't have people getting hurt over there.
Well, we're certainly trying to do the right thing, but otherwise we wouldn't entertain all these comments.
I, I appreciate that.
We appreciate if everybody come out to try to explain their viewpoint and what their top concerns are, so appreciate it very much.
Okay.
Is there anyone else tonight? Well, thank you for everybody who participated. I hope you feel like you were able to get your point across. I did, I, I did receive a letter from Tom Emery. This came from our, he sent it to the zoning department and they gave me a copy. So, I think that you talked about most of what was in there. There was something about cutting back the trees and the bushes and Mr. Wright has started on that with our service department and he's continuing to look at that, what else can be done there. They did mention Merlin Elementary and we're concerned about that too. We'll certainly, like I said, we'll communicate with West Claremont Schools. They were worried about their tax base going down, we certainly don't want that and that's in our interest too. And we want all our residents to, you know, have valuable properties. One thing was, they, they wanted a sign that said residents only. I think, first of all, the township's very limited in what signage we can put up. We have to follow uniform traffic codes and we're not a city where we can pass an ordinance and put up certain signs. We can do certain things. I think a no outlet sign was posted recently to discourage people from like, maybe trying to make a cut through somehow to other neighborhoods down in Pierce Township. Obviously, we, I understand these streets connect and go down through there. We wanna, you know, try to limit that, go down to Nine Mile and come in the other way is, you know, how you really should be going on, on some of these other streets. But certainly, we'll look at any, if there's anything we can do with the sign, we'll put up signs. We have no problem with that. We just gotta make sure we follow the uniform traffic code and we have to do, you know, some of these things have to be cleared by the county engineer. So, if there's something we can do, we'll, we'll certainly address that. But I think everything else in here has been dealt with. There was a question about stormwater runoff and I believe that's been already taken into account with the plans that were approved. But like Mr. Wright said a minute ago, we are somewhat limited the, for what the township can or can't do in these properties because they are zone business. It is a major retail corridor on one twenty-five and there's gonna be businesses that are gonna pop up along there. And we just gotta do the best we can to make sure there are quality businesses that, you know, build a nice looking building. We, we made sure in this case it is a nice looking building. It's not gonna be an eyesore or something like that. We're somewhat limited in what we can do in these cases, but we'll do everything we can. And we've heard all your concerns and Mr. Wright has heard all of these too. And we'll do, we'll go down the list and we'll see what we can do to make, you know, each one, you know, come to fruition. We'll try our best. And so, we do appreciate you coming out to explain your viewpoint. And I'm very familiar with the streets back there, I've been down there before. I know what you're talking about and it's a very nice neighborhood. You guys have a beautiful neighborhood. Most people driving down one twenty-five don't even realize it's there, which is probably not the way you like it. It is a quiet, beautiful neighborhood, the sidewalks are nice. The only problem, I think we've ever had down there is one house that wasn't cutting her grass for a long time and taking care of the house. And we, we had many nuisance cases about that house. And I'm not sure of the present status of it today, but I think it's better than it was some years ago. So, and we work well with Pierce Township too. If there's something we can do together in these kinda cases, with some of these streets down there off of one twenty-five are half Pierce, half Union Township. So, we try to, with our fire and police, try to work together to give you the best services down there. So, we're well aware of that and we'll do everything we can.
Well, I do wanna appreciate Mr. Wright's quick efforts to get the bushes trimmed initially. Within thirty minutes of me talking to him, I pulled into the street, thirty minutes later, his vehicle pulled in behind my, behind my vehicle, we was taking pictures or surveying the problem. Two weeks later, the bushes were most part gone, not all the way, but for the most part.
Well, they're working on it and his, he's got a very small group in the planning department. We run a tight ship here, we don't have a huge staff. You've got, just over a neighboring township in Hamilton County, they got huge staffs that do all this stuff. They also charge a lot of taxes and, and spend a lot of money, a lot of your money. And we try to do our best to have high quality and we run a tight ship. And these guys do, we ask a lot of our staff, we really do. And, but they do, they, they rise to the occasion and do a lot and they're, they're good to work with. But we'll get your information and we'll certainly do everything that in our power that we can do to make the situation better and improve it, okay? So, if there's nothing else, gentlemen, I got a few announcements to make real quick and then we can adjourn our meeting. Just want everybody, since there's a lot of people here tonight, we'll mention the, we have a post office downstairs. If you've never been here to the post office, you can buy stamps, ship packages. It's a great place to do that and not have long lines and they're very responsive. So, it's right down, just below here. So, if you ever need postal work, come over here. Our civic center offices are open for zoning permits and things like that. However, our meeting rooms still are closed due to COVID-nineteen situation. We're hoping to eventually get those back up, we'll see what happens with the whole situation. Our parks are open though, so you can go get full use out of our parks. We did approve Halloween trick-or-treat to be traditional October thirty-first from six PM to eight PM. So, October thirty-first, and like we said, when we approve that, it's up to everybody to decide if they wanna participate. If they don't, they can stay home. But Halloween will go on. Union Township Fall Junk Days will be coming up. If you have stuff you wanna get rid of, it's hard to get rid of your traditional trash, like a large hunk of wood or maybe an old refrigerator, things like that. Fall Junk Days will be coming up, it's like October nineteenth through the twenty-fourth. Check our website for the exact hours and times. There's a few items, like hazmat items, we won't accept, which I believe are along the lines of batteries, tires and chemicals. But everything else is fair game. I think people throwing away old decks and frames. Someone threw away an old jet ski, didn't have a motor or anything anymore. They just had the carcass of the jet ski and they brought that in and threw it away. So, you'd be surprised at stuff they bring up. But if you have large items to get rid of, this is your chance to do it. And finally, Election Day, November third, but the early voting, I believe, is October fifth. And you have to register to vote before October third. So, if you haven't registered, do that now.
Where is that, early voting at?
At the Board of Elections, down in Batavia. Yes. And it's real easy, I did it in the primary. It took me like five minutes to vote and you get a regular ballot like you normally would on Election Day. You fill it out and turn it in, you're done. So, at first it's Monday through Friday, but closer to election, they open it up on Saturdays and Sundays too and extend the hours.
Might mention real quick that the Board of Elections is still looking for poll workers.
Yes, very good point to make. If you're interested in being a poll worker, they desperately need people to work the polls. So, help the process out by being a poll worker. It's a great way to participate, especially, some copies are giving people that day off. If you're off that day and wanna have some fun, it's actually a really rewarding experience to be a poll worker and get to learn how, what goes on behind the scenes. Anything else, gentlemen?
No.
Capture everything, okay. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moves, sir. Second. Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
We're adjourned at nine oh seven PM.
Thank you very much. There was a couple people that wanted to give some contact information. I'd be glad to take that from you if you wanna come up. Thank you very much. There was a couple people that wanted to give some contact information. I'd be glad to take that for me if you wanna come up.